Need a roll call?
Councilwoman Ron Rudenberg?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Here.
Councilman Bataglia?
Yeah.
Mayor LeBross?
Here.
This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice having been published according to law with a copy and file in the clerk's office and a copy posted on the bulletin board in City Hall.
Would everybody please rise for the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty.
Liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Ted, we'll go right to the agenda.
Okay, this is the Committee of the Whole Agenda for September 1st, 2020. First is a discussion, reference, resolution, intersection improvements for Kindercomac Road and Jefferson Street. This is the county proposing, the county's proposing to construct traffic and related improvements at Kindercomac and Jefferson intersection, and is requesting city support on the proposed improvements and maintain the installation improvements within the city and the right-of-way. The city supports the county's project and agrees to maintain the county's install, streetlights, concrete island, traffic signage, ADA compliant sidewalks and ramps. The cost to the city is HPD traffic control during construction, certification of the county, construction, ADA ramps, monthly PSE and G utility bills, and new traffic signals and new street lights. An nominal operational cost that would result from normal wear and tear or damage proposed improvements within the right-of-way. The shared service agreement is similar to the previous county signal improvements under the SSA between the city and the county. So, under the adaptive light signal, we have these terms defined in that, and this is basically a hybrid of exactly that, and they're making this improvements to the intersection.
Okay.
Okay.
Waiting for this for a while, so that's good.
Okay, next is an amendment to the ordinance, obstruction in public streets, 148. This rose out of some concerns that Dean had with enforcement, and unfortunately, Judge Denise did not agree with the current statute, so Steve and Dean, I guess, made some amendments to, with the assistance of our municipal prosecutor, obstruction of public streets. So, basically, this includes slowdown kids that play signs, garbage cans, used barriers, parking spot. This is for people to hold up parking spots in front of their residence or wherever they deem necessary, because they don't own this property and you can't prohibit somebody. So, you see somebody put out a chair and a broom, you know, blocking it because they're coming back and they're technically quote-unquote reserving their right to go back and park in that spot, and that's not how it works.
Yeah, I mean, so there's two ordinances actually were introduced.
Right, there's, the next one comes, reserve parking spaces, parking 170. Go ahead, Steve.
Oh, sure. So, yeah, so the first one is essentially prohibiting anyone from using a device in the street for, for preserving parking, or any unauthorized traffic control device in the street. You know, that's something that, you know, is of concern. And, you know, if you need an official street sign, you contact the city, and if it's appropriate to put up an official traffic control device, that's what we'll do. The other ordinance restricts, because what we've been seeing is, like, people might erect a basketball hoop in the street, right? These portable basketball hoops, they might leave it there, and it's the summertime, and you get crazy thunderstorms with a lot of wind, and they fall down, and they can hit somebody. So, essentially, this would prohibit putting athletic equipment, most usually basketball hoops, in the city's right-of-way or on the street. You know, the intention is, look, if it's a quiet street, you know, it's not intended to be enforced to stop some kids in a cul-de-sac from, you know, pulling out a hoop and shooting some baskets, but they can't leave it there, you know, overnight, you know, wheel it back in. So, the intention is not to be overbearing in enforcement, but have the tool necessary that if there is a safety hazard, the city is in a position that they can write a summons and have it be enforceable in municipal court. So, we've got these two ordinances on for first reading tonight, and obviously, you know, for further discussion at the next meeting.
Yeah, but one other thing that's saying the ordinance is like no obstruction to the sidewalks, right?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so if somebody, if somebody got, and they parked their car in the sidewalk, that means you have to walk around. So then, what do we do to that car? If the car is parked in the sidewalk.
Car, you mean?
A car, a car. You got two issues. Sometime people park their cars on the sidewalk, especially in the restaurant or later place they got in Main Street and Fairmont Avenue. That guy parked the car in the sidewalk, okay? The other problem is, and police fly towing, they occupy the whole sidewalk, so when you go and you walk in Green Street, you have to walk in the street, because these people, they use the sidewalk for their use, for their truck. That don't make any sense either. So, that ordinance should be applied to that people too. They don't should be block the sidewalks, and the guy in the corner of Fairmont and Main, they don't should be park the car in the sidewalks.
Well, I will tell you this, last year, we adopted an ordinance that prohibited blocking a sidewalk, using a driveway, you know, where you can't encroach onto the driveway with a sidewalk. I have to believe, I mean, I don't have it off the top of my head, but I have to believe it's already prohibited to park a motor vehicle on a sidewalk, and you could write a summons in our existing city code.
You can.
But I'll check just to be certain, but I would, I can't.
Well, you guys can check that too, but police fly towing and the guy in the corner of Fairmont and Main Street.
You cannot, you cannot park a motor vehicle on a sidewalk, motorcycle, car, truck, anything that blocks the right-of-way of pedestrian travel, and that's in the Title 39.
Okay. Well, let's start enforcing it.
I just had a follow-up to the ordinance, so those little signs telling people to slow down, would that still be allowed to be out there during the day if someone takes it in, because I feel like a lot of people really do utilize that because of, you know, the speeding issues and.
Yeah, that little sign with the little flag, yeah. The guy here has it because the people flying in Headman Street too.
A lot of people, you know, do utilize that, and I feel like it is a little bit of a deterrent, not much, but I feel like that's something that, you know, is beneficial.
Ordinance would say, you could put those things up on your private property, you can put up a sign, you know, you know, put up one of those things on your street, you know, slowdown kids at play, but you can't put it in the roadway. You cannot put an unauthorized traffic control device in the middle of the street without city's authorization. It's a liability hazard. I mean, I get, I understand the point of it, but they can put those little guys with the flags, you know, on their lawn, you know, where people can see them if they want to do that. And if they've got a concern about speeding, then I would tell anybody watching, call up Ted Aronberg and say, you know, look, we need somebody to address a speeding issue, and Ted and the city would look into it and address it, but the solution is not to just have everybody put stuff in the middle of a street that the city isn't aware of and isn't authorized. At least, that's the feeling of the city's professionals in this area. If the council disagrees, council's call, but that's the strong recommendation there.
Under the, under the current situation, the city is in the mode to purchase mechanical traffic devices, like new radars for the police department, we're looking at several new your speed trailers to put in, and also those, it basically mount to a sign and they have a flashing light that if you exceed the speed limit, the light flashes as you approach, and they're solar powered. So, I'm getting the cost of those we currently have in place and prepared to get those purchased and installed sooner than later.
And in the draft ordinance, it says, you know, this section shall not be deemed to prohibit the erection upon private property adjacent to city streets, signs giving useful directional information of a type that cannot be mistaken in official files, if not otherwise limited or prohibited elsewhere in the city code. So, you know, obviously, those little guys with the flag, you know, no one's going to mistake them for a speed limit sign. So, you can put that up on an adjacent street or on your property, you can put up that little guy, but, you know, leave it out of the street is the bottom line.
And your property means up to the curb, like you could put it up to the curb?
Includes the right-of-way, so I mean, look, I mean, if it's on the side, if it's not in the street, you know, I don't think you're going to see the city going out of its way to bother anything that's not physically in the street, but technically, it should be on, you know, the right-of-way extends kind of through the, up the curb, through the grassy area, through the end of the sidewalk, because, you know, that is still city right-of-way, even if you're responsible for maintaining it, and then you've got your, your property lined there, and so it really should be there, but as I said, you know, the intention is not to be overbearing in enforcement, the intention is, you know, when there's an abuse or there's a situation where the city sees a risk, you know, that it can take action. And, you know, Judge Denise is a tough judge, right? I mean, if our ordinances aren't clear and don't provide for this, he's not going to uphold it. So, we want to write it as, as clearly and consistently as we can to be able to have Dean at least write those ordinance violations when it's appropriate to do so.
But most of the problem with the basketball hoop, that sometime the people, they live almost in the street, and then with this strong wind, they can topple and topple a car or somebody. The other, the little guy with the flag, everybody has it, they put it sometime by their driveways, maybe it's going to be one foot into the street, but it's only, it's a deterrent to people to speed. So, maybe with the program that we got now, maybe the situation going to improve, because the police officers, they're doing a good job, and they get an average of about 10, 12 people speeding in this particular section. So, I hope so the program continues, by the time we can put more devices to control the people that want to speed in this area, because you know only Fairmont Avenue.
Oh, no.
Gold, you know.
Yeah.
We got to continue working, that's it.
Okay. Number four. Number four is a discussion of an intro of an ordinance for body, body worn cameras for police officers. The Obama, Mayor's Obama pledge includes one of the components that the city does not have. We have car cameras, but we don't have body cameras. So, myself, Jim Mangan, and Lieutenant Levis from the police department has been researching this, and we put together the funds to purchase $145,892.75 to purchase body cameras for the police officers that are working in patrol. Obviously, we would expand that the following year, so officers that are assigned in plainclothes assignments or the detective bureau. So, this, this provides the ability to either defend or certainly restore the, the confidence in the police department, and the only way that most of the people by today's standards, they want to see it on video, they want to see proof. So, we're going to provide that proof, we're going to provide the cameras, we're going to identify a policy that you're going to have to be wearing that camera when you go out, and you're going to have to use that camera, and if you don't, you'll be disciplined accordingly, and it'll be progressive, and if you don't follow it, you may not no longer be a police officer. So, the mayor and the council's commitment to making sure that the police department, the officers that are on it, and the supervision of those officers meets the criteria and the standards that are set, and obviously, earn the public trust, which is one of the major components of all police departments. And I think that under the current circumstances, especially what's going on in the world now, this has to be essential and has to be done right away, because without it, we're going to get questioned. And quite honest, quite honestly, I want to be able to tell people if we said we did it, we did it, and here's the verified proof of it, because that seems to be the only thing that will satisfy most. So, with your approval, we will move forward with this process, and soon as we can get the equipment in and get the guidelines approved, we will have cameras on all these officers that are working the road.
Okay, plus, plus the tasers. Every patrol officer should be carry a taser.
We have, they've been made aware of it, they're going to add more to that, the officers are trained with them. It's not 100% yet, but it will be.
Okay.
Mayor, that would complete the city manager's report for the Committee of the Whole for September 1st, 2020.
I'm sorry, how many body cameras did you say we got to buy?
I'm going to buy, the initial order is for, one second, Dave. For 120.
Do you know by, by when?
I, it's on a state contract, so we don't have to go out to bid for it, it's just a question of supply and demand. I don't know what the current stock is, and obviously, I'm sure that right now, body cameras are a hot commodity, but I won't know that till we get your approval and then put in for the order.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
All right. With that, I need a motion to open to the public place.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Ron Rudenberg? Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Hi.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilman Bataglia?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody from the public who would like to speak, please unmute your phones.
I would. Gary Tozzano, Mayor.
Hey, Gary. Go ahead.
Two items, basically, they're updates that we're asking for, the environmental group. We, at a recent environmental commission meeting, the city manager was in attendance and several council people, and we talked about possibly having a permit for tree removals on private property, to try and have an ordinance established to require permits, I should say. So, I just want to tell, one quick story. Recently, a neighbor took down two large old oak, old growth oaks in between two houses, and they took it down for fear that they may fall, and it costs $4,000 to take these two trees down, and the use of a crane was included in that price, as well as safety by having the street shut down by the police department. Now, there are people that are taking trees down in Hackensack and declaring them nuisance trees. Maybe they don't like leaves anymore, or they just don't like trees. But in any event, and that's their prerogative to have them taken down on private property, but I believe an ordinance should be established to have permits taken out to take down trees, no different than having permits taken out to perform construction tasks, renovations and such on houses. Now, I think that all permits should start at $100, and then there should be some type of a schedule built based on circumference. For instance, in comparison, 20 years ago, it cost me $20 in permit fees to just change a house boiler out, okay? $90, 21 years ago. So, $100 in today's world to start isn't a big deal. But I think it would make people realize how important trees are if we do establish some type of a permit to take down trees. Secondly, I'd like an update on the proposed improvements to our parks, such as Stipe, Columbus, and Johnson. It's been a year ago since we even talked about Stipe, and I want to know where we are. Are we going to get any type of construction started before the end of the year? That's all I have to say, thank you.
Ted?
I will follow up with Gary. I have a conversation with suburban engineering, and we're obviously kind of changing engineering firms. Because the plans have changed to some degree. So, I don't have that answer in front of me, but I will certainly get it to you.
I just want to make a comment, a little concerned about charging, how we charge people to take down trees, because if somebody has an arborist or a tree company comes and says, this tree's very dangerous, it needs to come down, and it's a young couple, for instance, new homeowner, and, you know, they may be a little strapped for cash, but they got to take this tree down because it's dangerous, now we're going to charge them an extra, whatever, $500 or $1,000. They may, they may change their mind, and all of a sudden, now you have a tree that's dangerous, and it could fall and hurt property or somebody else. So, there has to be a caveat on there, a damaged tree has to come down without having to pay. So, that's, we have, we have to address that and look at all the concerns of that, and, you know, and the pricing I'm concerned with too. I mean, people right now are out of work. I don't know, you see a lot of people taking trees down, I agree 100%, you know, that you take, it's no reason to take a probably good tree down, but if a tree needs to come down, it needs to come down. Next person, please.
Richard Salkin, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hi. Richard Salkin, Hackensack, New Jersey. Mr. City Manager, a couple of meetings ago, I gave a suggestion, and we put in one of those mildly lit pedestrian signs by the crosswalk up by the hospital on Prospect, and the mayor agreed with me, that's, that was a momentous occasion. Any possibility that's going to go forward?
We are looking into that, I've had one meeting with the Traffic Bureau already. The issue seems to be who actually owns that. In one, I thought that the city owned it, now I'm starting to learn that it's possibly owned by the hospital, so I can't move forward if it's the hospital, we'd have to work with them, but I am.
In the right-of-way? It looks like, I would assume it goes in the right-of-way, no?
I, I don't know, I don't want to speak until I'm sure.
Okay, fair enough. If you're looking at it.
But I will get you an answer, because I haven't forgotten.
Thank you. Couple of other things. You have a settlement on your docket tonight, Delgado. My question is this, it indicates $60,000 city money, is that the entire settlement? I guess I'm directing that at the city attorney, or is there additional funds from an insurance source?
No, that is the entire settlement. It's a personal injury claim, it's an auto.
No, I checked it, it's a pedestrian hit by a cop car. The other thing, with respect to firefighter, firefighter Kubler, I sympathize, I'm sorry? Somebody, somebody say something?
No.
With respect to firefighter Kubler and the resolution, which I certainly agree with your sentiment and your intention, but I think the way you're doing it is a really bad idea. Not that the fire, not that the union would raise this as unfair labor practice, although it probably is, how will you not afford the same benefit to any other city employee who passes away and their family extending health insurance? Which is okay, if you want to do it, but my point is, if you're going to do it, do it by way of ordinance and do it across the board. To do it slapdash, but with a single resolution is an extremely bad idea. And finally, my last question at this point, Mr. LeBross, did you have an opportunity to reread the record article from August 15th about the alleged illegal campaign contribution to your campaign?
I didn't, I didn't go back and look at it again, Mr. Salkin, as I read, it said, and I even called Deputy Mayor Canastrino after I read it the first time before we even had the next meeting, saying it sounds confusing, because it sounds like that we are under investigation, right? And when I, the way I read, went back and read it, that's not what it says, but.
No, no, I never suggested you were under investigation, I suggested you accepted an illegal contribution. And frankly, I took the names, and I checked your ELEC reports, and the person, one of the people named, did make a contribution to your campaign. Maybe you want to think about giving it back, but that's, that's it. You might want to think about that, though.
All right, thank you. I just want to say something as far, to Ted about the signs on, at the hospital. I'm not talking about the existing blinking signs that are already there.
No, no.
That may be part of the hospital, and I'm talking about the two pedestrian signs are there, they need to be pedestrian signs with lights and blinking lights on them.
Yes, that's, like that by Sussex and State Street. This, yeah, and outside the crosswalk in both directions.
Right, right.
In the right-of-way.
And that should have nothing to do with the hospital, so it's, I don't.
I think there was some confusion with the Traffic Bureau.
Yeah, I think they're talking about the other lights.
Yes, sir, I think you're right.
And, and, you know, look, I just want to jump in on one point to Mr. Salkin, is his time up or is he finished? I don't want to interrupt.
No, I'm just listening to you, Mr. Clum.
You know, with respect, I did not prepare this resolution for the firefighter that Mr. Salkin, you know, raised today, but, and I would suggest some of the concerns that he raised do require some further exploration, unless they've already been explored. I might recommend approving by resolution continuation through the next meeting, so just to be sure they're not cut off.
That's a very good idea.
Opportunity to take a look at them, because I, you know, Mr. Salkin and I do not always agree on some things, but in this case, I think his point is well taken, and I would urge caution in this area.
Okay.
So, why don't you amend the, if I, I don't know if you can still hear me, and I shouldn't do that, but maybe just amend the language so it's for the next meeting, I think that's a very good idea, Steve.
Extend it for 30 days, extend it for one month, we have a meeting on the 22nd, and by the 22nd, I can give you, you know, some, some better advice, or we can go, you know, to Labor Council, and they can provide you some better advice, because I do think this, if it's not done carefully and correctly, could open the door to some, some issues. So, I appreciate the comment on that, because I have to agree with it.
Okay. Next person from the public, please. Anybody else from the public like to speak? If not, I need a motion to close to the public.
Yes, thank you, I'd like to speak.
Yes, name, please.
Hi, my name is Richard Grant, I'm a Hackensack resident who opposes the New Jersey Transit Plan to power a microgrid with a new gas-fired power plant in Kearney. If built, it would spew air pollutants 24/7 for 30 years. What Governor Murphy needs to do is to instruct the agency to perform a comprehensive engineering and economic analysis of powering the microgrid with some combination of renewable energy and energy storage technologies. As a volunteer with Don't Gas the Meadowlands Coalition, I urged the Hackensack Environmental Commission to approve a resolution, and now I urge the city council to consider and approve its own resolution. Bottom line is that the gas-fired power plants' emissions would adversely affect the health and quality of life of people who live and work in this region. Hackensack is only about 12 miles away from Kearney, and the gas fire, and the greenhouse gas emissions would hold back the Murphy Administration's effort to achieve 100% clean energy by 2050. So, here we are again, an investor group had planned to construct a new gas-fired power plant in North Bergen to sell power to New York, that plant would have spewed air pollutants 24/7 for 30 years, and it took the Hackensack Environmental Commission, the Hackensack Council, and 50 other local government bodies passing resolutions before the governor announced his opposition to the project last October. In 2013, New Jersey's plan for a microgrid powered by the power plant looked sound to some and came with a massive federal grant, but that solution has been made obsolete by breakthroughs in science, technology, economics, and public attitudes. In 2020, we now know not only the oversized impact of methane emissions on climate change, but also that gas-fired power plants do emit methane. In 2020, we know that solar energy and batteries and other renewable energy and energy storage technologies keep getting more efficient and keep getting more affordable. In 2020, a bill that had been introduced in every legislative session since 2008 to require the state DPE to consider the cumulative impacts of such types of polluting facilities on overburdened communities and permit reviews, at last was passed and is headed to the governor's desk. Last, but NJ Transit remains prepared to ignore these past and near-future breakthroughs, willing to be the bewildering exception to the state's efforts to decarbonize its economy and promote environmental justice, and most importantly, is ready to adversely affect people's health and to accelerate climate change for 30 years. Hackensack's Environmental Commission and council made a difference in getting the North Bergen project rejected. Now, we have a window of time to get it. Bergen project rejected, now we have a window of time to get its state agency counterpart rejected, and an engineering and economic analysis of alternative energy sources done. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, as you had mentioned, this council did say that we were against the North Bergen project, and, and likely so, and, uh, we would never vote on a project like this without having a complete environmental impact study done, along with an economic study in how it would affect this area. So, uh, thank you for bringing this to our attention, Mr. Grant, and, uh, we will be studying this very closely and making our decision probably by the next meeting or so. Thank you. Next, please. Anyone else from the public? Motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Hearing none opposed. We'll see everybody at, right around 7:00 o'clock, thank you.
I need a motion to close.
Okay, tell your advice. Need a motion to close, I'll offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed. I need a motion to close to Cal.
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.